All right, welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting of April 13, 2023. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence for the victims of the school shooting in Nashville? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberating, and justice for all. All right. So it gives me a great question to begin by introducing your village board, starting at the far end with trustee Christopher Graziano. Next to him, skipping a seat, is trustee Susirriello. Next to her is my deputy mayor, Talavir. Next to me is village clerk Poppen, who is the star of the meeting tonight. And joining us remotely from his second home in St. Martin is Vic Correlli.
He looks like he's on vacation.
There you go, Vic. There you go. All right, public hearing, fiscal year 2023, 2024, preliminary budget. Public hearing is being held to entertain comments on fiscal year 2023, 2024, preliminary budget. Public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on April 6, 2023, and no written comments were received. So going right out to the public, anybody have any questions on the budget?
Not today.
Not today. Maria's got a headache.
All those numbers.
You're shaking.
Anyone joining us virtually have any questions on the budget? So if there, if there's no comments coming from the public, can I please have a motion and second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now can I have a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget? And declare the village clerk to print a copy of the budget in the minutes of this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Local?
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Trustee Serrill, Serrillia?
Aye.
It's been a long couple of weeks.
I'm prepared for questions. Trustee Viret?
Aye.
Trustee Flahlin?
Aye.
Mayor? Thank you. Mayor Jack Melaza?
Aye.
And that's it?
I mean, yeah. That's a lot of preparation I did for my meeting.
Well, so let me just say for the record, the budget process is a long process. It begins with our department heads, working with their assistant department heads, putting the budget together, then presenting it to village clerk Poppen, who then schedules one-on-one sessions with trustees and the department heads. It is a very involved process, and I want to thank my board, my local committees. I want to thank all our department heads, including our volunteer department head and chief burr. And I especially want to thank the person who this moment would not have happened if she was not here, and that would be village clerk Poppen. So this is why she makes the big bucks, ladies and gentlemen. It's budget season, so. Pretty funny what it is, though.
I know she does.
Wow. All right, public comment on agenda items only. So at this time, I will go out to the public if there are any comments on the agenda items. Go once, go twice. We beating a drum again?
No, it's about, it's about, we're sorry.
Okay. Administrative business, can I have a motion and second? Are the meeting held on March 23 or 2024?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, village clerk Poppen, who gives you the abstract?
Yes, abstract number 19 contains vouchers 221951 through 222072, and totals 837,872.39 cents.
Can I have a motion and second to approve abstract 19 as read?
Motion.
Second.
Now give it to Vic, because he was actually waiting there. All in favor? All right. All right, fire department equipment request. Can I please have a motion and a second to approve fire department equipment request nine of 2023, totaling approximately $1,600 for purchase of 40 self-contained breathing apparatuses, identifier shields?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Application for membership for the fire department. So can I have a motion and a second to approve the application of Kevin Garista Giordano for membership in our Woodbury Fire Department?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, advertise for letters of interest, expiring terms in the planning and zoning board. So can I please have a motion and a second for authorizing the village clerk to advertise for letters of interest for upcoming expiring terms on the planning and zoning board appeals? Letters will be accepted until 4:00 p.m. on May 5, 2024. And just for the board's dedication, we will schedule interviews at our next meeting on April 27. So right now, we are just approving to advertise.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All right, appointment, we have somebody new joining the village of Woodbury family. So can I please have a motion and a second to approve the appointment of Melissa Marchella to the position of full-time, full-time clerk? And, no?
Yes.
It has to be because of civil service. I reduced hours to 25 hours per week in the building on an hourly rate of $20.96 and a start date of April 23rd. And to approve an unpaid leave of absence beginning April 17, 2023, and then in May 22 of 2023.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. All right, change of employment status for Bill Press. So can I please have a motion and a second to approve the employment, change of employment status for William Bill Press from temporary provisional pursuant to Orange County Civil Service Rules effective April 14, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Second by Vic Correlli, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, on to all the business. So Clarida, New York LLC. So it seems like yesterday we approved the application for liquor license for Clarida. Unfortunately, it will be approved as a liquor license for beer and wine only. They have submitted an amended application for a full on-premise liquor license. So I will direct village clerk Poppen to inform the New York State Liquor Authority that the village has no objection to this amended application.
Motion.
No, I don't think.
I'm just so appropriate.
All right, resolution, unpaid water bills, 311. So can I please have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as presented on our website for the levy of 848 delinquent, delinquent water bills from an insulated water fund that totals $269,728.1 cents. A complete list is available in the village clerk's office. Do I have that motion and a second, please?
Motion.
Second.
All right, clerk Poppen with the roll call?
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Trustee Serrillia?
Aye.
Aye.
Vic Correlli?
Aye.
Mayor Jack Melaza?
Aye.
Just for a point of reference, last year we had more water bills than were not paid, 854, 748. And the amount not paid was slightly less, it was 234,595 hours.
So we're making progress. We had six left.
So it's kind of, you know, we had thought that we'd make people pay, but it didn't.
No, no, doesn't matter. All right, so now I have the M. and R. Park Water Number Six Fund. So can I have a motion and second to approve the resolution as presented on our website for the levy of 24 delinquent, delinquent water bills from the Water Six Fund, M. and R. Park, that totals $4,241.46? Once again, the complete list is on file in the village clerk's office.
Motion.
Motion, I'll make the second. Clerk Poppen with the roll call once again?
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Trustee Serrillia?
Aye.
Trustee Viret? Trustee Correlli?
Aye.
And Mayor Jack Melaza?
Aye.
I'll figure it out.
You want to release here?
Yeah.
So can you hear me now, Vic?
Yeah, I just texted you. That last roll call was good. I heard everything.
Okay. So this, last year we had 22 accounts at the M. and R. Park not paid as opposed to 24 this year. And last year it was $5,662.68 as opposed to the $4,241 this year.
Up and down. All right, the levy of previously exempt programs. All right, can I have a motion and second to adopt the resolution as presented to levy a prorated tax amount due on two cassettes in dry that was previously eligible for exemption?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Some of the last ones for this year, because we have to close it out to get it coming. I think going forward, I'm just going to state them instead of doing a budget, maybe do a quarter. No, I don't want to miss anything, a quarter maybe.
You're a winner of ideas. All right, authorize the mayor to sign agreement, IT Consulting Services. We are going to table this till our next meeting, April 27. So no action is needed right now. All right, waiver of permit fee request, Memorial Day parade. So can I please have a motion and second to approve the waiver of all fees associated with Memorial Day parade scheduled for May 28, 2023? Absolutely.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, it gives me a great question, then move on to this item. Home rules, resolution, support, hotel motel tax for the village. I'm going to read the resolution. Whereas the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees formally requested Senator James Stupus and Assemblyman Chris Ikis to perform legislation that would enable the village of Woodbury to impose a hotel motel tax of up to 5%. Now therefore being further resolved that the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees requesting enactment of New York State Assembly Bill A. 1658 and New York State Senate Bill S. 5891 authorizing the imposition of a hotel and motel tax in the village of Woodbury, and be it further resolved that the board of trustees authorizes the village clerk to transmit this resolution together with other necessary documentation for classes of the New York State Legislature, Legislature for the village. So can I please have a motion and second to adopt the resolution as read?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And on behalf of the village, I would like to personally thank State Senator Stupus and Assemblyman Ikis for assisting us in this matter. Okay, introductory local law eight of 2023, Architectural Review Board. So can I have a motion and second to introduce introductory local law eight of 2023, amending chapter eight, Architectural Review Board, and chapter eighty-three-one-four, Architectural Review Board Rules of the Village Code to revise and clarify the guidelines and standards of the, of the Architectural Review Board?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, can I have a motion and second for the village of Woodbury Board of Trustees to assume lead agency and to type this action as type one, action under secret?
Motion.
Second.
Give it to Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now I have a motion and second to refer introductory local law eight of 2023 to the Orange County Planning Department, the Woodbury Planning Board, and the Building Department for comments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, I have a motion and second to schedule a public hearing to be held on May 25, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. to entertain public comments on introductory local law eight of 2023?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, next up, introductory local law nine of 2023, Ridge Preservation. Can I have a motion and second to introduce local law nine of 2023, amending chapter three-ten zoning in the Village Code to revise and clarify the guidelines and standards of Ridge Preservation Review?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So can I now have a motion and second for the village board of trustees to assume lead agency and to type this action as type one, action under secret?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now can I have a motion and second to refer introductory local law nine of 2023 to the Orange County Planning Department, Woodbury Planning Board, and the Building Department for comments?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I have a motion and second to schedule a public hearing to be held on May 25, 2023, at 7:30 p.m. to entertain public comments on introductory local law nine of 2023?
Motion.
Second?
You're trying to give somebody else a chance.
Yeah. All in favor? There you go, Vic. All right, well, that concludes village business. Rapid rate, so.
I'd like to bring up something that wasn't on the agenda, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right, I'm going to bring a motion before the board that we tonight suspend the revitalization committee effective immediately until the village board has a chance to sit down and discuss what the future is and what we're going to utilize it for months forward.
Okay. Discussion? Anyone want to jump in on that one? I don't, we personally don't have an issue with it. We just had, we just sort of straightened out a back and forth again today. It wasn't the first time. We had this discussion about this grant. Right now, the grant has been amended. Through Senator Stupus's office, thanks to village clerk Poppen. At the same time, Bobby Ware is handling things with Claudia in our office. She has been assigned to our newly formed Building and Grounds Board. So I don't know what the rest of the board's feeling is on it. Or anybody wants to weigh in on trustee Graziano's suggestion? So.
So are you saying to suspend the plan meetings or?
Just, no, just suspend them until we.
Until we figure out what.
Till we get together and figure out what the best path is as a building.
Vic, you want to chime in?
I'm good with it as long as anything comes up that we handle it as a board and just keep things moving while we're figuring out the grant and everything else.
Sue?
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We need to redo it.
All right.
But as, as things come up, but like, the whole point of us forming it was to get input for things like the grant. So would we then call for a meeting if a project gets presented, would we want input?
This won't be, I'm not looking for a six, eight month thing. We're going to, we're going to put it together as a board.
Oh, okay.
What we need to do with this going forward.
Because there was a purpose behind.
Yes.
Is this going to delay like lights that they've bought or anything?
No, that's already in the works. So that's just going to keep happening.
We can handle that, we can deal with it.
Those lights, we believe, were delivered through die away. So, yeah.
So we'll see the benefits of that this year, of this season.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Vic?
Aye.
All right, public comment?
Well, I had other things to say, but the committee is looking to be suspended. I mean, I don't understand why. It seems to me that last meeting was put on hold, and to me, it seems political.
I have to stop you right there. I made the decision to cancel it. It was the night of music posters. Sue was put in a very difficult position. My daughter was also being interviewed by music posters, so I couldn't be there. Vic had a prior engagement. CJ was having surgery, and the mayor had another meeting. So I'm going to stop you right there. None of this is political.
Okay, but then.
People going around saying that we're deliberately delaying because of politics is political. Because that's what got back to me, which prompted my email this afternoon. I could read that out loud if everybody would like to do.
All right.
Nothing is political. Nothing here is political. Teresa, you know me a long time.
I would like to hear that email out loud, read it publicly.
Sure, sure.
Can I finish speaking?
Yes, I'm sorry.
This is not a public hearing.
Yeah, I know, I know, but it's public comment.
Comment, yes.
Yeah, I know.
So, I don't know, just my impression, just things that were transpiring, that's just the impression I got. Not until other committee members brought it up to try to reschedule it, you know, then was it rescheduled as of today. And now we're looking to suspend it, like, for what? You know, all our committee members, we've been working on this for two years and feel like we want to get something accomplished, and now it's just, we're going to just suspend it? Like, I just.
Well, it is being accomplished, Teresa. We have people in the village, you brought the ideas, that's the whole point of the committee, to bring the ideas to the village. The lights, the Buena Vista, all that was, was being incorporated. Now we have, we have people that are working for the village that are seeing it through because it is their full-time job. The committee was never meant to be a full-time position for anybody.
No, I understand.
So, so I'm not seeing the, the other side. I think the committee for this, for this one grant served its purpose. And nothing is being how I know that the, the, the things that were floating around with that, it's being believed, we're going to lose the money. Desiree has been working diligently behind the scenes with Senator Stupus's office to make sure all the paperwork is done, all the documentation is compiled. I'm not sure what else there is to do.
I think there's just been a lack of communication on both ends. I just feel like.
But, but emails.
You said today was, was great, but I think, like, we didn't know as a committee that.
Your chairman was on those emails, Teresa.
Chairman.
Nothing has been withheld from anyone to, anything Desiree puts out there, puts forth. There's, there's a member of the committee and a member of the village board on it. So I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, I, I don't want to go down that path, and I've said this to you before. None of this is politically driven, none of this. I respect every single person that is on this committee, including John, including yourself, and what you've done and all the passion you have for it. But in the interest of not wasting anybody else's time, if there's something else to meet about, the committee will be ready to meet. It's not a disbanding of the committee. It's just to avoid, you don't have any text messages I got from people behind the scenes about what, what's going on with revitalization? I don't need that. I really don't. And that's part of the reason why I trammed in today with Mike. Because it's, it's, it's a lot of misinformation out there, again. And I don't know where it's coming from. I don't know who Sue's doing it, but it's not necessary. We're all trying to row in the same direction, we think. It just doesn't feel like that right now.
Okay, so the items of the grant, things are being handled, like, then why can't we meet and open on something else to improve?
Are there ideas that you currently had other than the grant? Because all I have, because I'm not liaison, but all I have seen were issues being brought up about the grant and not moving forward, and that's why you wanted to meet. If there were events you wanted to hold or things like that, that's a different story. But there should be a, an agenda, minutes sent to the village board? I haven't seen minutes in a while. So we don't even know what's going on most times on, on the committee.
There are minutes, I just became the secretary, like, the last one, whenever the last meeting was. And I submitted minutes, and what I shared with everyone, but if not, I can. And that brings me to another point that I had. That I want, like, regularly scheduled meetings, just like other committees have, you know, village and town, they have regular scheduled meetings, like, every Monday of the month.
Isn't it the first Monday of the month?
No.
Last Monday of the month?
Yeah.
But that's, the, the next meeting was when you were going to meet, or your group discussion with Victor. That's why I didn't understand where all of this was coming from. That one meeting was canceled because it was all, we were in the middle of our budget sessions here. It was a very bad month. March is not a good month for the village in terms of timing. We have, you know how many budget meetings we have?
March, maybe, like, maybe it's the moon screen.
I did explain it. I said no member of the village is, is available, and we're trying to be conscious of everyone's time. That's it. And there's no hidden, you know me, I, I'm not going to hide things behind an email. That's not how I, how I do business.
We need to reset our committees, because we don't need that, we don't need that, we're going to postpone more.
Well, because things, things came on.
Just, just so you know, so town has the parks committee or the parks commission. These are formally set in law. None of these committees are set that way. We created them, they're not.
As advisory committees to the board, because we put in things every.
Like, like the beautification committee or the parks committee and.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. So they're not set that way, so. Anyway.
All right, and I guess my last point was the, I was thinking that minutes should be posted to the village website. The community could be aware of it, so it's a little.
I think the reason why they had it minutes is because the fact that it wasn't ever legal.
Yeah.
That's why they're not subject to the open meeting laws, the way the parks committee is and the way that the beautification committee is. Like you notice, we don't ever have cameras on people. You can have a forum without attorney present, like, that's why, because it's not a formal meeting, uh, committee.
Well, I don't think that's the right direction, that we should be moving into, upsets a tall meeting.
If you or the chairman have an agenda that you want for a next meeting in April, send it. And then we can make sure Sue and Vic are available to be there. Do you agree?
Yeah.
As long as there's something other than the grant to talk about. Right now, there's nothing to really speak about about the grant, in my opinion. I mean, is there a desire? Am I missing something?
Well, you just suspended it.
Like, we suspended it, but we said until there's.
Until we get together and decide what we're going to.
The board decides what's going on. So it was an advisory committee, not the local law to form the committee. So you would have set parameters and terms and things like that similar to the parks. Beautification committee on the town set, so you're not, so this committee is advisory. It's not just like your land preservation and climate smart, not subject to legal law. The committee has opined that minutes do not need to be taken, however, suggested. Jen is not in the post, and it's just purely an advisory committee. So that's how you set it up. If you wanted to do something differently, you could do so. You wanted it more formal, you could do something.
Exactly. And, and just so you know, Teresa, it's not, it's not just this, it's the land preservation committee, because I've been definitely. Speaking with Rachel, who got in touch with Neil Prowse, they would like to, because they haven't had a meeting in a few, in a few months. So, which has nothing to do with us, but they want to set a meeting because they want to get things reorganized. So it's the same path we're going down with them. And I think that's really, climate smart is kind of self-sustaining at this point. So, um, once again, that.
Yeah, but she also, she sends us from, which her requests are, isn't it?
Yeah, it's a little bit different in power. But the land preservation is doing the same thing. And I could review the texts that I got from Rachel today or yesterday pertaining to her and Neil have spoken, they want to sit down with, actually after our next meeting. They want to do like the.
The work session.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We need to focus.
What's happening?
We need to focus the committees.
I know.
We need to have a discussion on how we do that.
I know, I know. So it's one of the parkland account, it's one of the things that I wanted to focus on. So anyway, just so you know, it's not just revitalization. So it is, the land preservation committee is part of the same situation.
I want to thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Anyone else in the public who was joining us yet, Maria? Can you do it?
Yeah. With Memorial Day parade coming up, who are we reaching out to with a close circle? Because we usually decorate it. Should I reach out to Bobby or Rob?
You could reach out to Bobby.
Okay, because I know we still have that.
Okay, because I know we still have that interminable agreement, so. Because I have to decorate it and get it cleaned up.
Just reach out to Bobby and then maybe Bobby, Bobby knows because he did all the decorations when he was on the, um, town building and grants and all.
We, we, our, our committee planted and everything, but I'll reach out, I just wanna let the rest of you go too.
Number, um. Just, uh, and Bobby will keep me in the loop, just to let me know when he's gonna do this.
I'll send, I'll send a text to Desiree. Bobby runs Tuesday, Wednesday. Tuesday, alright, so I'll, I'll reach out to him and leave a message.
So that last week, the week before the parade itself, I would have Bobby do all that? Or do you want that done by?
I'll reach out to, because I had set up a, um, a schedule to do the two Saturdays before, the 27th and, no, the 27th? The 27th and the 16th, I think those are the two Saturdays before, with my committee pending weather and weather. And I'll reach out to whoever I need to in the, in the village. So we were going to fix that up because that's our annual event that we take care of. And thank you for approving the application for the parade. I appreciate it. As soon as I get myself together this weekend, I have to write the letters. All board members are invited to march to the parade, so be it. If anyone knows, if anyone has any, uh, convertible cars or let me know. Um, I know we're working on something else and I have to figure out. We're getting there. I've got a few people lined up what we're doing, so.
I'm gonna have Bobby clean up also the, the section down below, here, where the benches and the tree.
Down here, that way.
Yep. So it's looking a little beat up. Next week's weather should be in the 60s, so it's okay to be working out there.
He needs. Yeah. If he doesn't, he doesn't currently have a budget line to do plantings or whatever, let me know.
Oh, yeah, 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 next year he does. When your lawn starts, he has a budget. Yeah, I know.
Actually, Desiree, you can have him reach out to me. You can give him my information. If he wants, I can purchase them through OnTours because we go to work down there and I can have him apply to my budget line out of the communication. Alright, thank you.
Thank you, I'm here. Anyone else? John? Anyone joining us virtually? Speak now, forever hold your peace. Okay. Moving on to department comments. So starting with Mike Penella.
Good evening. I have no comment tonight. Thank you.
Alright. Chief Buck?
Hey, how you doing? Uh, he had no comment from my end either.
Alright, very good. Uh, Mike, you got me here tonight. Nikki?
Nothing also. I'm good, thank you.
Village Board Godwin. Nothing, none, none.
You were all ready to speak tonight. Now you're just like.
I was, I mean, I was talking about the fact that primary day is the last Tuesday in June. And the today's AM at St. Patrick's Church will not be used because it's vacation by the school. So, yes, if you live in District 7 and 10, you'll be voting at the Town Hall meeting. District 2, 3, and 9 is at the Central Valley Firehouse and everyone else is at the Senior Center.
Okay.
I would hope you cared to talk about the budget.
We're gonna start a call. Come on, Vic.
Desiree, start a call. How many calls you gonna?
How many calls you gonna get up till election day? Like, I'm here, but where's the machines?
I have no idea how many we got.
Alright.
Although the board of elections did want to close village offices on every election day, so they're gonna use it.
So you said one.
I did, but we didn't have a party. We just don't have a party. Here's my credit card. Yes.
That's what she did, she did. That's all you got.
Oh, and listen, if you're happy with her upsell, you need to get a correct sale permit from the town parks office. She thinks that's not the law, but she has to enforce the law. So please, please, like, don't get emails from people that their neighbors are having a correct sale permit. Please remember to get a correct sale permit if you're having a correct.
What information? Alright, uh, Vic Pirelli, we'll start with you.
I have no comments. Thank you.
Really? You wanna try it?
What's that?
You wanna try it?
I'll, I'll be out of breath after a few words, so.
Okay, come on. Alright, thank you for suffering through the budgets and everything else like that. So thank you very much for that. Uh, trustee Yasianna?
Alright, a couple of things. One, I wanna thank Desiree for helping put together, again, the budget. It's a lot of work, especially with all of our input and strong feelings about things and, and ideas and back and forth and making changes. But they can bring pencils. Um, I also wanna thank all the department heads for their diligence. They poured forth the budget, but it's not only responsible, but it took into account what the effort is going to be to make it very sustainable for future generations. It's a lot of work to do out there and we had to make some tough choices this year against what I would call unachievable cap. We take our fiduciary responsibility very seriously. We work hard to balance need and services against the tax levy, but I think this budget does that. I think it does it well. And I think we're setting it very up in the future with water, sewer, vehicle replacements, fire, everything that's gonna continue to be sustainable into the future. So I think, overall, I think it was a success. And again, Desiree, thank you for all the work you put into it for the bottom half of this year.
Trustee Suriel?
I would like to let everybody know that on February 23rd, I sent an email to the Monroev Woodbury School District and asked them to adopt real property tax law, section 466A for EMS and fire department volunteers. Uh, I also provided them an analysis of our current Woodbury EMS and fire department members who qualify and provided them with an estimate of what the impact would be on the school budget. Uh, yesterday I received a response in the mail and I'll just read it very quickly. It says, "Thank you for contacting the district to request that the school district consider increasing the value of real property tax exemption for fire department and ambulance company volunteers. The district appreciates sacrifices made by these, by these volunteers. We take our taxpayers' requests for exemptions very seriously and we are committed to evaluating the cost benefit of the increased exemption amount in a timeframe that allows us to meet the next taxable status deadline of March 1st, 2024. The main issue with the tax exemption is when one group receives an exemption, everyone else pays a little more. So whenever we grant an exemption, we must keep all the taxpayers in mind. We appreciate the comprehensive data you provided to us about the Woodbury residents who would be impacted by this change. Any changes to the school district exemption status is required to be adopted for all five towns located within our district taxing jurisdiction." So. Next year, but we'll put it on the calendar to follow up, uh, January 2nd.
You don't know how relentless you are.
To make sure that we're addressing.
Thank you, Sue.
Did you hear that, Chief Buck?
For you, our friend.
I, I did. And I wanna thank you, Sue, for doing that and the entire board for following up with that. And I guess we'll, we'll see, table it until next year. But thank you again for your efforts in putting that together and, you know, having to get all the information. We, we do appreciate it. I, I'm sure EMS does as well if they were on. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Good work, good work.
Well, that's what I think we're gonna need to do next year. It's, it's glad some members and some of the village board members come and speak on.
Yeah, we gotta follow up on this one. That's a.
Right, we're gonna have to follow.
Circle of an answer.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Start the conversation and, you know.
We planted the seed.
We planted the seed and we will follow up with this, so.
Yeah. And just to let you know, we would be happy to go speak to us if you, you know, as, I would go speak as chief and with the board. If we wanna go speak on one of the board meetings, that'd be great. We have, we have, uh, what, 10 or 11 months to prepare our speeches, so I think that's enough time.
Yep.
Alright, Chief Buck. Sue, good work. Anything else? Anything?
Oh, good, sorry.
Good, okay. There you go. Uh, Tiffany Manier?
Um, first, Teresa, I apologize for cutting you off. I should have let you finish. I'm sorry. I hit a nerve. My fault. And that won't happen again. I apologize. Tomorrow is lighted up blue for the Monroev Woodbury School District and, um, it's our autism awareness day. Um, every year, I know our kids do a really great job of dressing in blue for school and our village. Um, private department put up lights around from the circle tree, um, that are blue, um, so if we can all show our support tomorrow for our receptive organization and all of, um, our, our residents, um, that is affected by this, I think that would be great. Um, and I know every year the, uh, the outpouring of support is just overwhelming, so, uh, thank you. And thank you, Desiree, for patience, um, your diligence, um, dealing with this board through, in mayor, through budget processes is not easy. Um, our department heads are fantastic and are very good. They come prepared, they do their research, they are very cognizant of every dollar. It's a taxpayer dollar and, and understand the gun that we're under trying to balance a budget, which is never easy. Um, we have a lot of expenditures coming, coming forward. We had a lot this past year, more coming that are unanticipated. Now we plan because we know what the issues are. Um, and I think, Desiree, you do, I, I don't know of anybody else that could do a better job at finding the money and, and keeping us honest where you said this isn't irresponsible, we need to do that. And I, I appreciate that you are very clear with us and what's on us and, you know, what's responsible and what's not. Um, and I know a lot of people would do, make decisions for the wrong reasons and you always keep it for the right reasons. Thank you. I appreciate that. And that's all I have. So thank you.
Alright. Uh, I would like to, Natasha, would you like to speak on anything? I know what the answer is.
Actually, yes.
Go ahead. I'll let you go. Now you have to go to the podium. You gotta go. You gotta, you gotta say your name. You gotta say you're from Climate Smart Task Force.
I'm Natasha Wozniak and I'm part of the Climate Smart Task Force. And I apologize for showing up late. I just wanted to, um, make sure that the community was aware of our upcoming cleanup events. Um, it's birthday, we're, um, the highway department is putting together a great cleanup that we're all holding and everybody can participate in. Um, afterwards, uh, there is a, was this already said?
No, no. Glad you're here. You can say it.
Afterwards, there is gonna, the men's club is gonna do a barbecue for everybody. So great, let's have everybody come out and support the cleanup. The men's club. We also have lots of events during, at the library. At the Cornell, um, the Island Cornell branch. We have kids, it's mostly for kids, but anybody, you know, uh, making a seed bomb, get your hands mucky and muddy and to make a seed bomb, take home right around. What's it called? Um, that's Saturday following Earth Day, um, actually the Friday following Earth Day is Arbor Day. And there's, um, Saturday, the 29th, we're gonna have a tree planting at the library. So we really hope everybody who comes out is aware and that we're able to post it on, um, the village site.
I already, she, I already spoke to Chief Buck about I sent him everything, so I don't know if it's, I didn't look at it when I came by here, but probably this weekend will be the community cleanup on the board down below. And then also details on the, the green fair. Let's just roll it all together in the green fair. So, uh, and I told him, I think we're gonna break it up, the green fair in two separate screens because I don't think it'll all fit on one. Do the Arbor Day with the tree planting as one. And then the second, there's the green fair on Corone Circle and how that will be blocked off and we'll have vendors there and we.
We've got, we've got a couple of vendors we look forward to, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
So I was gonna bring up before Natasha arrived, I was gonna bring up the community cleanup. Just in general, ladies and gentlemen who are here, the community cleanup has seen a downside the last couple of years. Used to be a very big event where we have a lot of people that would come out and not so much the last two years. It's your community. The garbage needs to get out of here. It's, you're beautifying this place. So please, if you've got a few hours to spare, you've got a child that needs service hours, there is no reason not to come down. The Woodbury Community Association of Men's Club is going to be cooking. We're gonna centralize this at Central Valley Firehouse for everybody to attend. Uh, Climate Smart Task Force, the next day, well, not the next day, on the 29th, is gonna do a tree planting. And I just wanna thank Joe from Mark Nursery, who was providing the tree. Um, our highway department will be involved as well as, I don't know, but our highway department will be involved in terms of uh, excavating a hole, excavating a hole and then getting that tree in there. And then from there, we will be doing a green fair with various green vendors. There'll be things to give out to the kids. It'll be educational and fun all at the same time. So, um, I wanna mention also the Women's Auxiliary is doing a night with a psychic medium here at Village Hall. It's a fundraiser for them. So that is April 28th, 9pm. Uh, also, to get out the information, on May 6th is our Electronic Day, the drop-off and shredding event. So I'm pulling you straight from the newsletter. Next week, the next week here at Village Hall will be two meetings about the future of St. Patrick's Church. They needed a place to meet. They're meeting here. Eric Brady will be leading the charge on the Tuesday and Thursday of next week. I believe 7pm. Yep, 7pm. Um, I asked you to just, I don't know.
Yeah, 7.
7pm. So that'll be here. Um. And I think that's really it for now. Uh, I will say that we've got, I've got the blood drive for Michael Hansen lined up. I just have to figure out if we're doing it at here again or we're doing it at St. Pat's Gym. We have also, where did I just, oh, the Blue Mass event. So it has nothing to do with the Village Woodbury, but it has more to do with three members of the board who were members of Knights of Columbus there. So we're gonna be hosting a Blue Mass at St. Patrick's Church, the Knights of Columbus, which will be in honor of all first responders. So it is something that we as knights have wanted to do for some time and I spoke to Father Ryder earlier in the week. So he's excited to get it over the map.
What day is that?
May 31st at 7pm. It'll be a mass for, it's two ways to do it. You can do it for police officers or you do it for all first responders.
Yeah.
So him and I decided that it would be best to do it for all first responders. What is that? Wednesday, I figured it would be, allow the town board to come. Um, the, uh, police officers, I know for Chief Watson, the tenants, the town board, and we need to recruit Lieutenant Phillips, so everybody can be there. And that's really all I have tonight. So, um, okay, with no further comments received or business to discuss, can I please have motion as second to adjourn this meeting?
Motion.
Second.
Wait, 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 wait.
Yeah, three-way.
Yes, okay. Who wants the motion? I'll give it to.
Give it to Sue.
And CJ second.
CJ second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is scheduled for April 27th. Three public hearings I have at night. So. Yep, it is April 27th, 7:30pm. Alright, Woodbury. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Vic. Feel better.
Feel better, Vic.
Thank you for everyone. Good night.
Good night, Vic.
Feel better, buddy.